Before we call the meeting to order, Tom's gonna go over the online protocol.
Thank you everybody for coming to the Elko New Market City Council Business Meeting for March 9th, 2023. If I can get my slide to advance, there we go. So tonight's meeting will be held in a hybrid meeting format. This means that it allows the public to view and participate in the meeting through Zoom in addition to attending the meeting in person. As a result, however, in order to conduct the meeting in an orderly manner, certain protocols are needed to be followed. First, the host will keep all participants muted until the public meeting, comment in the public meeting is requested or a public hearing is opened. The city council will first solicit comment from those attending the meeting in person. At the appropriate time, the mayor host will specifically solicit comment from the Zoom participants. Comment will be solicited from those participating via PC or phone applications. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand virtually. The mayor host will individually recognize those wishing to speak and will invite you to speak. The host will unmute your microphone at that time. Your microphone will be remuted after you have spoken. So how do you raise your hand with Zoom? If you go to the bottom of the screen, there's a little menu. If you click on Reactions, it will pop up a little window and then there will be an option to raise your hand. Click on that button and then you simply need to repeat that process to lower your hand afterwards. So those are the virtual meeting protocols, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Tom. Let's call the meeting to order. Everyone, please rise with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, ununderfounded, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda?
Council will note that there's been a revised agenda that has been placed out for them. As the council is aware, we've added two items to the agenda for tonight. The first one is related to Police Department Administrative Staff Restructuring and the second one is to authorize the hire of a maintenance worker, one, to fill a vacancy that's recently occurred. Both items have been added to consent agenda.
Okay. Any motions?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Bryce, second by Kate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have an agenda. And we have a presentation. The Fire Department.
Hi there.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Everyone's here for you, by the way.
Yeah, I noticed the lot was full. I thought, oh, boy. I'm Jody Malkin. I'm the president of the Relief Association and I'm here to present to you guys a check from our relief gambling, our yearly contribution to you guys. So this year, we are giving $80,000.
All right.
If...
All right, next is public comment. Does anyone here care to speak for public comment? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Carrie, whoa.
That's up there.
Is that better? I'm afraid to touch it now. Carrie Jennings. I live at 8919 280th Street West in Eureka Township.
Welcome.
And I have a presentation that was sent to the clerk.
I have it if...
Can we turn this down a little bit more? Does it have to be that hot?
I had turned it up.
Okay.
And the reason we had it because we just had somebody in the back.
Oh, I see. Okay.
All right. Mayor, would it be okay to present the presentation?
Yep.
Okay, just give me a moment.
So I'm a neighbor. I live on 8th County Road 86, but I'm also a professional geologist. And that looks a little small there, but you can see my professional geologist license number. And also on the slide for your reference later on is the history of work I've done in this area, starting with mapping Rice County and parts of Dakota County and reviewing the maps of Scott County when I was with the Minnesota Geological Survey, starting in 1989. I am also, that's when I started adjunct faculty at the University of Minnesota and I teach glacial geology. And then I moved on to the Department of Natural Resources Division of Lands and Minerals and did further mapping for them focused on aggregate. And then I moved to EcoWaters in the Department of Natural Resources, where I worked as the Science Report Lead for all maps and science publications coming out of the groundwater section. And I'm currently with a water nonprofit called Fresh Water. So I'm gonna talk to you about this unique glacial setting and the groundwater vulnerabilities of this area. In addition to mapping, I commuted for 30 years on I-35 and thought about this landscape a lot. So, next slide, please. You're right at the margin of one of the last ice lobes that covered this area. I like to say it came to I-35, but actually it's a little bit, it got a little farther east into Dakota County and, you know, a little beyond Pillsbury Avenue in Dakota County. So we're talking about an ice slope that went down to Des Moines. Next slide. And it's important to understand that setting. It's the main agricultural area in the center part of the state, that broad green lowland that looks like somebody dragged their fingers through the frosting of Minnesota. But over here on the edge, we start to emerge from thick glacial cover and we have thinner cover to the east in Dakota County. And right here at the edge, it's a complicated setting because this is the ice margin. Next slide. And if you've ever been to a glacier, ice margins are just incredibly complex sedimentary environments. They change in an hour, just how much debris is sliding off the ice. This ice slope in particular had multiple advances that kind of shingled one another. And this area had at least four different ice advances that was depositing layers of glacial sediment here. Next slide. If you go over to Henderson, you can see examples of what this till that ice deposited looks like when it's uniform and a continuous layer. Or if you just go a little farther west and put a shovel in the ground, you'll probably see similar soils. This, however, is three different stacked layers of these Des Moines lump tills. Next slide. What I want to talk to you about today, though, is the way an ice margin is interrupted by something that's kind of like a storm drain underneath the glacier. These tunnels were first discovered in Denmark in an ice margin setting very much like this. I like to think of Denmark as being like the Wisconsin of Europe because the ice margin's pretty much the same and it's the same size. And those lines that come up to the heavy dashed line are the subglacial tunnels. And the image on the left is a relief map showing you what these tunnels look like. They're short, discreet, mile-wide valleys cut into the surface by glacial meltwater that was underneath the ice. These, the reason Denmark leads in understanding these is because those tunnels in some places are filled with sand and gravel and they're the only aquifers that Denmark has. Next slide. In the North Sea, they also look at them because they hold oil, their reservoirs in the North Sea. So in the upper Midwest here, all of our ice margin, all of our ice lobes have tunnels similar to the ones in Denmark. We haven't invested the resources to map them as carefully. In this slide, we didn't understand where they were in the Des Moines lobe, so we conveniently placed our inset map over that area. We understood them in Wisconsin better and in the Superior Lobe in Minnesota. Next slide. But you can see in Wisconsin what they look like here and I'll show you our local ones shortly. But these are a half-mile wide valleys in Wisconsin, irregular, though. They host wetlands and lakes and then they have often a central ridge, which represents the gradual closing of the tunnel as the ice kind of deforms in after the water stops flowing. And then the little snake-like ridge, which is called an esker. Next slide. And the other thing about the Wisconsin tunnels that's well documented is that they rise in elevation. So what you're looking at there is the bottom profile of the tunnel and how it rises from the right to the left, and these are several different profiles, and how the outwash fan, the sand and gravel deposited beyond the ice margin is a gentle slope away from it. The reason they're deeper, farther up ice is because they're driven by the pressure of the ice on them and so they're able to erode more deeply where the ice is thicker. Next slide. And the most spectacular ones are on the floor of Lake Superior and the northern part of Lake Michigan. And they, these actually carve into the sandstone bedrock of Lake Superior and the deepest part of Lake Superior is in one of those tunnels. So they're ubiquitous, they are very erosive, they're very deep, linear features in the bedrock surface that can be filled with sand and gravel. Let's go to the next slide and we'll look at the deepest one in Lake Superior. It's partially filled with sand and gravel. This is a geophysical image, kind of like an X-ray of the subsurface. And you can see the valley is outlined in red, a faint red line on the bottom image. There's some layered deposits within it. That's the sand and gravel fill. There's even a little esker that's kind of outlined there. The material on top of that is then the lake sediment. So this is how they fill if they're underneath a large body of water. Next slide. But the ones that we have here at the multiple margins of the Des Moines lobe are probably filled with different things because we didn't have a large lake that covered this area and we had these multiple advances that stacked different tills. Next slide. So this is zooming in on your area now. So I live there on the southwest side of Chubb Lake on County Road 86. And it wasn't until these high-resolution relief images came along that I realized that Chubb Lake is a tunnel. It's a strangely oriented one and it probably had some other life, too. But there's a clear tunnel coming up from the south from the Hazelwood area and I'll show you a close-up of that. There are some smaller tunnels right here in Elko New Market on either side and then there's a larger one at Rice Lake. And I'm gonna just zoom in on those areas and show you. What you're looking at here is the data that the Minnesota Geological Survey gave to me on Monday. Is that what Monday was? The 8th? Yeah. And they usually draw, they've just finished mapping in Dakota County, a revision of their county geological atlas. And they released this data and drew me a new cross-section. Typically, they draw them east-west, but I wanted one north-south. So they drew a cross-section, north-south where that black line is. The red line is the county and the township border. We didn't draw it in Scott County just because they aren't mapping there right now and they didn't feel as comfortable with the data on the edge outside of the county. But what we used to draw the cross-section were the larger blue dots. Next slide. So zooming in a little bit, I mentioned Rice Lake. So I, in addition to being a, I don't remember if I mentioned this, in addition to all my professional geology career, I also served on the Eureka Town Board and Planning Commission for a total of nine years and I'm their current mine supervisor. As of December this year, they, last year, they decided they needed a mine supervisor. So I conduct the annual reviews for the mines. So I recently looked into all those mines that, which I could point. In the Rice Lake area, yeah, there, pointing to the mines, thank you. All those kind of rectilinear depressions are the major gravel areas. This is consistent with that being the mouth of a large tunnel. Whoever's got the cursor also kind of went to the ice margin, too. You can see that the terrain changes from Scott County into Dakota County. It's kind of bumpy in Scott County and near the black line. And then as you go east, it becomes this big, broad, flat outwash plain. That is the ice margin and I can see a discrete line that marks it. And that tunnel is the feeder for all that sand and gravel in Rice, in Dakota County in Eureka Township. So the tunnel is, Rice Lake is located within it and you can see it's an irregular, about half-mile wide depression that extends to the west. Next slide. And then the one that I had puzzled over for much of my life, living down here, is the one that leads up into Chubb Lake. It kind of comes, the best place to view this, if you know where that Hazelwood Church is? If you go down to Hazelwood Church and go to their parking lot on the south side and you'll be looking out into the tunnel, look to the west and you'll even see a linear tree-covered ridge in the middle of it. You'll see the esker in the middle of it. So it's a east-west oriented tunnel that takes a turn to the northeast and comes all the way up to the bottom of Chubb Lake. So these are large erosive features. In Chubb Lake, it eroded through bedrock. Next slide. And then for the one, for what it looks like in the subsurface, the Minnesota Geological Survey pulled these well logs for me, again, the ones that are along the cross-section. And the thing to note here is that the bottom line is the bedrock surface and you can see that it's not flat. So there are depressions in the bedrock surface and they are located under the depressions at the surface. This is where I'm mapping these tunnel valleys. And one of them I'm calling the Rice Lake Tunnel Valley. The one to the far right of the cross-section is the Hazelwood Tunnel Valley. And the logs of boreings that the MGS gave me support these interpretations because they show thick sections of sand and gravel. And in one of those logs, it shows an absence of bedrock, the one that is, there's pink really far down in one of them, in the deepest part, near the deepest part of the tunnel. And that's all gravel. So these, this supports the idea that there are these large tunnels and that they are, the other thing that supports some concept of cutting into the bedrock is the static water levels. The level that water would rise to in a well is the same in the glacial wells as the bedrock wells. That means they're exchanging water most likely down there. So let's go to the next slide. Here's the Hazelwood Tunnel, just with kind of blue lines outlining the span of it. I think you can see I-35 kind of in the middle of the slide as that ridge and the parking lot that you can see this from, the Hazelwood Church is on the northwest side of I-35. And then I put little kind of faint lines over the sections of the esker that are most obvious. Next slide. This shows you the three tunnels that I believe are in this area. So I've labeled 280th Street, 260th, and then 62. So they're smaller and you either see a tunnel or you see a plug. And that's because what happens with these subglacial tunnels is they become so large that they thin the ice above them and it can collapse down into the tunnel. And then you end up with this kind of pool that will collect sediment. Webster sits on one of these flat-top ridges, thank you whoever's pointing or getting it. And Lonsdale sits on one of these and yeah, there's one up there by 62. So it's a feature consistent with this being a tunnel. Next slide. And they also lead to the major heads of outwash, is what we call it, on the outwash plain. That is the Vermillion River watershed. Next slide. So I've labeled them here just so you can kind of orient yourself a little bit. I put where the large gravel deposits are in Eureka Township, Rice Lake. And that, if you think about it when you drive north, look over to Freeji Sod Farm and that's where, that's where the tunnel is located. And the ones here are smaller and they're harder to see, but the Vermillion River follows the course of one of those. And that's why there is a depression in that area in your township or in your city. Next slide. So I had a conversation earlier today with the DNR and showed them these data. I didn't want you all to be the first ones to hear this just because I think they should know this, too. I used to work there, so I talked to the people I used to work with. And they agreed that this is worth investigating, that what you really need to do is understand by pumping hard on a well near that and trying to draw from water laterally how much exchange of water there is between that tunnel area. And, and that would mean it would impact the surface potentially. I don't remember how many slides I have. See if there's another one.
Can I jump in with a question?
Sure.
You said you talked to the DNR and they said it's worth further investigating?
Yeah.
Do they have any more to say than that or?
They would, the person who assigns the groundwater modeler to the project is on vacation this week. I talked to her supervisor and he said that he would let her know I would meet with her and she will take this into account when they design their pumping tests and require, you know, request for pumping test for this project. I just want to point out that Murphy Hanrahan is a fen in North, in Burnsville. It's in the same setting, just to go one more slide and I'll show you. Murphy Hanrahan's that big green blob of a park. There's the tunnel that Murphy Hanrahan is in and then the big outwash plain, the smoother to the right. Crystal Lake is located within that tunnel. And that fen is a place where we know there's calcareous groundwater coming up and feeding a unique ecosystem. So we know that's what's happening at Murphy Hanrahan, so. So some of the other things they could potentially do is check the water chemistry and see if it's a bedrock source. So I think that's my last slide. Are there any other questions? You get a credit for listening to this.
I'm sure if you gave me 20 minutes, I'd have a slew of questions for you.
Well, I'll stick around.
I, I wouldn't mind, well, maybe we can take care of it after the meeting, but I wouldn't mind even getting your contact information to follow up with you.
Yeah, I have a card. I'll leave a card and I should have put it on that first slide and I didn't. I think I just put my name, but.
A lot of great information. Does anyone else have, anyone have questions? Thank you for taking the time to put all this together. Anyone else care to? Please.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Carlson. My address is 26126 Pillsbury Avenue in Elko.
Welcome.
Good to be here. You know, publicly elected officials in a public setting, doesn't get any better than this. So I appreciate the system we've got going here. So as discussed, this council, and we're often reminded, this council doesn't have a yes or no vote on Niagara. However, it does have the ability to influence what kinds of businesses and industry find us attractive. My comments will focus on your ability to set water rates. Six months ago, this council approved a new industrial water usage rate on a consent agenda item. This council has sole discretionary power to set and collect fees for utilities and can change them at any time. These powers are granted and defined by state statute and guided by other state and federal agencies. I'll provide a detailed citation. I think Josh, you responded. You got my email from this afternoon. So I've got the details of this, but I pulled out three summary points and I'm almost quoting verbatim from them. So one, public water suppliers must encourage water conservation that leads to demand reduction. Two, water is a scarce commodity and you want to structure rates so that they send a price signal to customers that encourage efficient use of water. And then lastly, municipal water utilities are entitled to a fair return or to make a fair profit. A city or local water utility commission may consider the profit factor when setting rates for utility services. The rates, however, must also be just, equitable, and reasonable. In that last point, I used the word scarce. And as you may know, the USGS data as of 2009, studying our aquifer, stated that it's already in decline, more water coming out than is going in. The Met Council projects that the water demand, just from its area of jurisdiction, will go up by 28% by 2040 with 50-plus communities planning new wells, Elko New Market being one of them. So it's, I think it's time we start treating groundwater as scarce. So back to the industrial rate structure. Let's keep in mind that the rate structure that is being proposed would apply to two-thirds of the water that the city would then produce. And so here's my assessment. I don't see in the rate structure a mechanism for that demand reduction to occur. There's no accounting for the cost of replacing the groundwater that would be pumped out. It doesn't send any price signal to the consumer of that water to encourage their efficient use and it doesn't generate a fair profit for the city as guidance allows. So in my view, this newly enacted industrial water rate is by far the biggest subsidy that is being offered to Niagara. I think the really good news is that the five voting members of the city council have the power to change that. Not the state legislature, not the DNR, not the Met Council, not the county, you all do. So someone famous once said, "When I get new data, I change my opinion." What do you do? We all have got a lot new, a lot of new data since we did, than we had in October. So I'd respectfully request that the city council change their opinion, reformulate a super-heavy user industrial water rate that's based on the true total cost of groundwater, including the replacement cost of it and that would generate a fair profit margin for the city. Again, this is within your control and I'd love to see that on the agenda when you vote on the other resolutions or ordinances concerning Niagara. Thanks.
Thank you. And Mr. Carlson, just want to say thank you for all the time that you've put in. I know this has been a big passion of yours, well as many in the room, but no, I appreciate it. Anyone else care to speak under public comment?
Oh, I gotta go.
Before, before you go, I just want to point out, we will likely be looking at this and taking action at the next council meeting, which means it would not be available to speak under public comment. So if this may be the last opportunity, if you did have something to say, to say it at a city council meeting. So with that, the floor is yours, Jody.
Hey, thanks. First of all, thank you everybody for responding to us and, you know, it's a lot more than our county has done. Since we talked about hypothetical gain, I'm here to talk about hypothetical loss. I spent three days doing 21 markets on the houses surrounding the proposed project. Most of them are not in the comprehensive plan. I talked to two appraisers that gave me loss just for approximation to this property. So I know this is all hypothetical, but as a Realtor, and Bryce, you know as well, we have to disclose things. Everything that I've learned, I have to disclose. It's by statute. We have to guide them to the site and let them review it for themselves to find out if they want to live near this or not. So what does that do for the residents here? That's a potential loss in profit for them and possible no sale at all. When we think about this, I just want us to think about, are we trying to become a city that just has more industrial, more office space, more everything and no residents, become a town of 300? Because not everybody's gonna want to live next to a truck every six minutes and take the loss that there is. And that's tax revenue to our county, to our state, to our city, everything. I think that this would be a great time to just think about what we want to achieve. Other than money, we want to be, like your motto, be a community. I mean, we have time to be the catalyst of many small towns and not to feel pressure from the county, from a big business, anything. Take the time to truly listen and reread the survey that you guys had done on what people want to do. I moved out here for peace and quiet. I didn't move out here to be in an industrial town or a town with all this other stuff. I want to have a town that gets together on town days and enjoys each other's company and not do un-harm, not do harm to your neighbor. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure there'll be a TikTok.
Does anybody else care to speak under public comment? Welcome.
Thank you. Janelle Kujna, 26775 Grand Avenue, Elko, New Market. Thank you, Mayor, council members, for allowing me to speak. I'll be brief. I would like to ask, request, strongly demand that we have some sort of public forum. There are multiple questions that are unanswered. I went through all of the Planning Commission meeting minutes, all of the city council meeting minutes and we could literally have a whole day conversation about this. I think the community, both Elko New Market and the New Market Township residents that are affected by this deserve answers to those questions before we're closed off and can't speak at all. So I would ask that before you put this on the agenda on the 23rd, that we set some sort of public forum so that we can have a discussion about what this is going to be. I'd also ask that you wait to vote until you get the water appropriations permit back from the DNR. I think that today Carrie Jennings brought some great information that the DNR will be looking at and it's very possible that there will be additional requirements. And I would prefer that we wait on the items of subsidies and the plat until the DNR makes a decision on the water appropriations permit. And then finally, I just wanted you guys to point out, we did do a change.org petition. I'm not sure if you've seen it, but we have almost 2,000 signatures on it. Over 1,200, 100 of them are from Minnesota in the local area. That's a big amount of people for this area and I don't know who's all seen it or not. I'd encourage you to go look at it and look at the comments that were given on there. And then I also wanted to thank you for the I-35 presentation today and ask that that presentation be shown to the public so that people understand what's going on and going on, not only in Elko New Market, but also in New Market Township. Most of the land that Elko New Market Township plans on developing is actually township land and it's getting poached one property at a time. But the residents of New Market Township, 3,700 of us, aren't aware of what the city's plans are. And I've been to the board and they are not aware either. So we're not doing a very good job communicating as a community. So I would ask that we find a better way to communicate with those of us that live in New Market Township. I understand that this is being driven from Scott County and a need for an additional tax base. It's been a drive to develop this since 2010 and a lot has happened. But one thing that hasn't happened, in a lot of the meetings that I've reviewed, the New Market Township Board has not been invited for, with a seat at the table. But it's our land and, and the people that live in New Market Township are gonna be mostly affected by this. So I ask that you take that into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tom or Renee? I, I understand the comp plans go out to the township for comment and review, right? As does the AUAAR. So the, so any development plans were provided? So, the Sony development plans were provided to the township for comment, to the board for comment, correct?
The comprehensive plan is sent to the township for review and comment. Individual development proposals are not. We do have a New Market Township Board member that sits as a liaison on our city's planning commission. He attends, you know, fairly regularly. So, I guess, you know, that was set up and intended to be kind of a communication device in some ways, back to the board?
We're required, though, on the comp plan to solicit feedback, right?
Correct.
So, and I'm not, Janelle, I don't, okay, there you are. I'm not trying to be argumentative in any way. I just, I, it does frustrate me that a lot of, there seems to be a breakdown in communication in a lot of spots. And, you know, I do feel we do what we are supposed to do, at least. I'm not going to say that there's not room for improvement on that. But if the board's telling you they didn't have any idea that we could be looking at industrial development, that's, I don't think that's truly accurate. But, and I do also want to address another thing you asked for, which is be another public forum. I did want to discuss before the council meeting tonight ended, maybe having something like that ahead of that vote. So, it's, we're on that same page. So, with that, is anyone else?
There's two more.
Excellent.
And, Mr. Mayor, there's Beth online that would like to speak as well.
Okay.
Susan McPhee, New Market Township.
Welcome.
Thank you. Well, I can't believe that we're still having this discussion despite the obvious opposition displayed by a large number of people inside and outside of the city. If you recall during a past meeting, it was revealed to you that multiple people were advised that if we didn't live in the city, that we basically had no voice. That superior attitude is disturbing. New Market Township encircles the city, but of course, you know that. In fact, in an August 2017 article titled, "A Decade After Merge, Elko New Market Looks to Forge Unified Identity," one paragraph in that says it all. An island, as an island surrounded by neighboring New Market Township, the ex-urban city is slowly annexing land to keep pace with population growth. Or, as the former mayor put it, "We're the bug in the middle that's eating our way out." All I can say is, wow. Based on that verbiage, it appears, New Market Township residents, that we have a bug problem. I'm going to assume that he wasn't referring to the city, citizens of the city as bugs. Who would do such a thing? I do, however, feel it's an appropriate description of what's taking place, and of those decision-makers who feel that they have the right to change the look of the land and the way of our life, and the way of our life for that, for that of its citizens and those of its neighbors. A bug that's eating your way out, more like a parasite destroying its host. Just because you have the word "city" in your title does not give you the right to treat New Market Township residents like second-class citizens and pick off pieces of our township and build industrial eyesores on our land which will financially benefit the city. The fact that you annexed the township property into the city that you want to use for your industrial park, which would include Niagara, is evidence enough that that is exactly what is happening. Now, interestingly enough, Dakota Electric wants to build a substation on New Market Township property, Kitty Corner across Deuce, which would be more for the benefit of the city. I find the timing of this extremely suspect. It wouldn't be to help power this industrial park in the fact that Niagara wants to run 24/7, would it? Well, you can have it, build it on your property. I would also like confirmation on whether or not a truck stop on the west side of I-35 is being talked about. If that's the case, I have to ask myself, what are the chances that two additional projects that would both benefit Niagara would be built in such close proximity to them? A truck stop and electrical substation. I, for one, don't believe in coincidences. Perhaps you should do your due diligence and reach out to Lakeville PD and ask what issues they have had in relation to the truck stop located off I-35 and County 70. While I can't speak for all citizens in both township and the city, based on what I've heard in meetings, the majority of us are united in our desire to maintain our land and lifestyle to include peace and quiet, as well as lower crime rates. In fact, in that same 2017 article, it mentions that the growing suburb has a chance to forge a new identity, a safe haven for growing families, where residents can afford to build their own homes, send their children to quality schools, and get to know their neighbors. The growth you're craving flies in the face of those very words. You are naive if you think that you can retain that small-town feel to include low crime rates. You don't have the right to force-feed us your urban development vision, which is a significant departure from why we moved out here to begin with. I don't know what is with some people who can't just leave well enough alone. If you crave living in a higher-populated, more industrialized area, might I suggest moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come on up to the podium.
Larry Schofield, 11550 Deuce Road.
Welcome.
Hadn't intended to talk. I've spoken before. I've sent emails. I don't know what else I can say, except I haven't heard anything about proposals to protect, especially myself, right directly across, what is the barrier to that? No, I'm hoping. From the lights, the noise, it's hugging right against that east property line, that whole 125 acres. That's where Ryan and Niagara wants to stick that way over there where all of these residences are. And yet, I've heard no response, whatever, from anyone, whether it be Ryan, Niagara, or this city council, about what are you going to require? Are you going to leave it up to Ryan? Is that what you want to do? They get to determine what the requirements are to protect the New Market Township residents?
I'll just address that. If there's conversations going on between the developer, the landowner, and the city, I really do not want to comment on anything until it's actually official. Otherwise, it's just speculation.
Okay, and see, that's been the problem leading up to this. They always kept quiet, right up to the end, to protect the developer in Niagara. That's wrong.
Well, certainly not to protect the developer in Niagara in this case.
What's that?
It's certainly not to protect the developer in Niagara in this case. I can't speak to any past.
The specific plans were not known until pretty late in this. And now that I see what's going on, because originally, I've got a map there, Niagara, or, before Niagara, Ryan had planned on putting storm ponds over there, and nice-looking greenery and buffers. Boy, did that change. All of a sudden, now it's totally hugging that east property line. And if any of you remember the map that I showed you previously, the semis are coming down from Deuce, and they're going to go around the back, and they're heading north, straight towards Deuce Road. All the headlights from the semis, and the noise from the semis is right at that east property line. That's crazy. That's all I have to say.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I think Renee can maybe provide some feedback on those items, which are in progress.
If you're prepared to, yeah.
We're reviewing those items.
Okay.
That's all I'm going to comment on. We have received a sound study, updated light study landscaping plan, and the council will have technical memos on each of those items for the next meeting.
Okay. And Larry, you have been vocal on this. I don't, and I feel bad if we've given you the impression that we're ignoring you. It's more work behind the scenes to try and come up with a solution. But that's kind of where we're at with it.
Do you know when will you be able to share anything about that?
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to before we take any action.
I am also.
Yeah. Who's next? Welcome.
Hello. So, sorry. I'm not prepared. I wish I was. I thought we would have a little more time. So, I'm going to be quick. But my name is Gina. I live on 2040 Hickory Drive, or Hickory Ridge Drive. Sorry, I'm fairly new here. Okay, first of all, I just want to say that I kind of feel bad for you as Elko New Market City Council, but I feel like you guys are in a position where you can actually do something. Going through previous minutes, meeting minutes, and talking to people, it does sound like this project, to a degree, maybe not Niagara, but the industrial growth has been planned for quite a while, and at a county level, and not just Scott County, Metropolitan Council. It's just in various minutes. So, the fact that no one really seems to know much about it is really disturbing to me, actually. But also, the open house for comment on that AUAR, I thought I saw it, and I did go back, and I did. It was for, it looks like, one hour in 2020 on one day. And it, let's see, is that correct? February 26, 2020, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. I don't, I was not living here at the time, but if it was just posted on the website, I don't know. I don't feel like that gives enough time. So, anyways, I just want to comment that from an outsider, but knowing enough to know that this is not right, and then looking into it a little bit further, not saying it's anyone's doing here, but it is kind of alarming. And I feel like you guys do actually have at least a little bit of power to stop this, or at least try to. And you guys are voting, you said next week? Can you?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, okay. Can you just clarify what you're voting on exactly?
Should be everything.
Which is, is it just the?
It'd be the subsidy, the plat, or preliminary plat.
Maybe Renee can run down the list. She probably has memorized.
I might. The application for rezoning of the site that Niagara is proposing to locate on, the application for preliminary plat approval, application for conditional use permit for the additional silo height on the Niagara site, and the business subsidy applications.
Okay. So, you can't actually say no to Niagara, but you can make it less attractive for them, if I understand correctly. And then, I just want to see if, I know you said this might be the last time to comment. I can send you a textbook, and I probably will, of statistics and reasons to say no, especially with the jobs and giving them any sort of subsidies. I mean, they're projected to make billions next year, in all honesty. They don't need any help, any support. But can we at least submit maybe some written comments, data, like anything? Like, can we have a little bit more time to just give you more information or comments prior to voting? That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think there's ever a point in time where we're going to refuse information coming our way.
If you'd like to send information to the council prior to future meeting, it would simply be a matter of emailing it either directly to the council, or if you send it to our general info line and say, "Please forward to council. We do that directly."
Okay. And is there a way to have certain comments on record versus just?
If you send an email and ask it to be part of the public record, we'll.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Is there a deadline or timeline for Linda to get it, to include it with the packet that then is posted?
We would need it the Wednesday, the week before. So, next Wednesday would be, ideally, we would want to get it. After that, it becomes a matter of process of when the packet is getting ready to go out the door.
You've been waiting really patiently. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Ally Clement, 26511 Zerxese Trail, Elko, right over here. Minutes, where she was talking about the minutes. And I just want to say, wow, that's, somebody's had that job of typing up all of those comments. Who was that? That was amazing. And I really want, I just wanted to say, like, I really appreciate your colorful, you know, how I vehemently denied or argued instead of saying yelled. It's really nice. So, thanks for that. So, I do want to talk about those minutes, though, because I think it's really important to note that at the beginning of that meeting, there was a question of, when are these questions that we're asking going to be answered? And the answer from the council was today, tonight. And I said, "Before we leave here?" And you said, "Yes." And unfortunately, at 11:45 p.m., we left there, and there were a lot of questions that were not answered. And so, I.
You're referring to the public hearing minutes, correct?
I am, yes. And there were a lot of questions not answered. So, unfortunately, I mean, I understand you obviously didn't have the answers, but I do think there needs to be further discussion, because those questions were asked, people were very upset, quote, "answers were not given." There needs to be answers given before a vote. I honestly think that if you move forward with a vote without having another public forum, it's absolutely a slap into the face to all of these people here, and the crowd of people that came on that first public forum, because you have to answer these questions. One other thing that was in the minutes was that you were going to contact some other cities that had Niagara. Did you guys end up going ahead and doing that?
We did.
I was just wondering if you happened to contact the Town of Concrete, Washington, who actually had to announce in their 2022 budget that they had decreased revenue from water sales to Niagara bottling by over $35,000, because Niagara was sourcing a different, had sourced a different source closer to their distribution, which led to the increase of the residents' water rates. Did you talk to them, Town of Concrete? No?
We did not. They have 50 facilities in the United States. We did not contact all of them.
Okay. Did you talk to the Pleasant?
At the time that we talked about it, we were going to contact cities where they had located and located recently, to see whether or not they did what they said and said what they were going to do. We contacted roughly half a dozen cities that had new facilities that were operational and located in the last seven years, and the feedback we had is that they had had no issues with them. They had done what they said they were going to do. The other assertion was that there was a, that they had been involved in all kinds of lawsuits with cities. We did a extensive legal search. There was only one lawsuit involving Niagara, in which the city was mad, essentially, one jurisdiction.
They were mad, or they were sued?
No. A city was mad.
The city was sued by, okay, I just wanted, you know, mad is.
But there was a city that sued Niagara because Niagara chose to get their water from a different source. That city lost the lawsuit and lost it bad enough that the court awarded the legal fees back to Niagara. There isn't a history of those types of things. If there are other issues with regards to loss, no, we did not contact every single city that they have located in the United States and internationally.
Did you contact the closest one, Pleasant Prairie, Wisconsin?
I would have to check on that.
Okay. I was just wondering if you had contacted them, and they had maybe mentioned that, you know, their police records have over 150 complaints of trucks, semi-trucks lining up, parking, blocking the road, you know, 150 complaints in the past three to five years. So, I was just wondering if you had contacted them as well. So, the Town of Concrete, with the budget loss based on them, and then the Prairie, Pleasant Prairie, Wisconsin, were those two of them that you contacted? No?
Was trying to.
Yeah, that issue wasn't brought to our attention previously, to be respectful.
Oh, okay. Okay, so, that was just one of the questions that I had. I guess I can go down, and we made a list of the questions that have been asked, that have gone, that were supposed to be answered by the end of that night. So, do you want me to just, like, read them off one by one? I have, like, four pages.
We're probably not going to go through each and every question right now at the public, or at the public comment, but.
When do you think we could go through them?
Well.
You can certainly email it, and we can take a look at it and provide it to the council, and the council can provide direction.
So, they'll provide direction or answers?
We provide direction to the city staff to move forward with whatever it is that we're looking to do. So, when you say answers, I just, I want to address that briefly, because for months now, our city staff has been, and understandably so, working tirelessly to try and provide, to try and address questions and concerns that have been brought up. Unfortunately, when you have the volume that we have, it's never going to be as satisfactory as we'd like it to be. I feel pretty confident in saying. Um, I, I feel pretty confident in saying, I'm sure there's been an email somewhere that I've missed and I haven't gotten back to someone, so it's not that we're avoiding you necessarily. And if there, if you feel there are some items that are, that haven't been addressed, I'll make sure they get addressed before we take any kind of action on anything.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of items, actually. Yeah, I can email them a copy, I guess, you know, I mean, I'll email you.
Whatever's more convenient.
And you can get back to me or, you know, we could go through them and actually answer the questions like you said you were going to last time.
Sure, and what I was trying to say is I think we've probably done our best job, made our best efforts to try and address the questions, it just may not have gotten, answers may not have gotten back to the right people. All I can say is that we're, we've worked really hard, we're not we, city staff has worked tirelessly to try and provide answers to questions. I realize it's not a perfect system, but if you leave questions with us, I'll do my best to make sure we get followed up, or you get followed up with.
Okay, I'd just like to say again that I think that, uh, public forum is, um, absolutely needed and I think that discussion is needed, not just us telling you what our feelings are and our problems are, only to have you turn around and vote anyways what you're going to vote.
I understand.
Thanks.
Thank you. Before we go online, oh, please, come on up.
Are you okay? Hey. Joe, what's in your email?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Vida Conitz, on 983247 Street East, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Um, I have talked to you before about my concerns about water quality. Remember, I said I'm the one that took students to the river and, and want to preserve and protect it, I also have concerns about my own well. Those concerns have not gone away and I do appreciate you hired L R E to do a study, right, to take a look at the, at the geology? And my understanding is that they did a fine job with what they knew, but I think what you heard tonight is that they didn't know everything, that there is more to the geology than you're going to get from a statewide map or a county map, they're just incomplete. So I would really plead with you to not move forward on anything until you know what's going on with groundwater and whether it's going to affect our surface water wells and our surface water rivers. These is, this is the headwater of the Vermillion, it may not be a trout stream here, but the water is coming up to the surface, that is traveling downstream, right, to where it is a trout stream. And trout streams have to have cold, well-oxygenated water. If we're in a drought situation and the water level's lower, it's going to go up, right? And that is going to make it very hard for them to survive in areas where it is a trout stream. Um, secondly, I, I wanted to chat with you about sustainability a little bit, I, I'm not sure if you're aware of this statute, but according to Minnesota statute 103G 261, domestic water supply excluding industrial and commercial uses of municipal water supply have first priority for use. Domestic water supply. So if Niagara had applied for their own well permit as an industrial use, if there were drought here in our county, the D N R would say, you need to reduce your usage. Because we have a drought, we need to prioritize municipal domestic water use. But they're going through our city water, your city water. And so I'm not quite sure how you're going to do that, how you're going to be able to prioritize domestic use, we have statute that says you must, okay? So I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that. And in regards to the comments about lawsuits, um, there's articles about Los Lunas, Los Lunas, uh, New Mexico, where the city was in a drought condition and tried to restrict the amount of water that Niagara was using and they sued them and they won. So, you know, maybe New Mexico doesn't have the statute we have, right? But, um, this concerns me. And I looked up the company, it's not a small family company, I remember when the gentleman was here and he showed a picture of his family and we're just a nice family company. They have $24 billion in assets and they take in $500 million a year and if you look at the map, they have factories in pretty much every state except Minnesota, right? So it's not just a small family business. So if we get to a point where we have a drought and you need to say Niagara, we need you to use a little less, they've got to have a whole lot of lawyers that are going to come after us, right? So I, I just hope you'll really think about all of this before you decide to do any voting and that you do hold that public forum, which would need advance notice. So maybe the prudent thing to do would be to take another look at this, look at Ms. Jennings' data and, um, instead have a forum in two weeks and see what happens with the D N R. The multi-aquifer test, so I understand the D N R procedure is you guys need to pay for the year permit fee, right? And then they're going to send information out to the stakeholders, to Vermillion River folks, the township, people that are invested in this. And they'll have 30 days to comment. And then if they decide they need, that this multi-aquifer test is done, my understanding is that needs to be run for about a month. You don't just do it once and check how much water, you know, what's happening, you have to let it run for like a month to get the results. So do you want to move ahead with something before you have those results? When it could be that now you're going to have township people like me whose well goes dry and will be going to be coming before you to say, hey, you need to help pay for that, right? Or the trout stream isn't getting the water they need and you've got Trout Unlimited in here saying, hey, you wrecked our trout stream, you know what I mean? I just, I think we have to think sustainably and planning and so I would say, please slow down. And there's reason we're questioning these things. I know you're doing your due diligence, but you're learning new things now. And so please, take a look at it. And then one last note, if I could, um, there is a bill in the Minnesota legislature that would ban plastic water bottle sale in the, in Minnesota. And it's probably not going to pass this year. There are bans in cities and it's an, it's an idea that's growing, there are plastic bag bans in states, but plastic water bottles don't have a very good reputation, they're kind of piling up in odd places, right, like our oceans and they're in all, we have plastic in all our bodies. It's not good stuff, we don't need it, right? So, um, what happens if that, in two or four years, if the legislature's successful? And, you know, I'm on the board of the D F L Environmental Caucus, I'm going to be pushing this, I want it, I want to get rid of those darn things, I don't want them. Jody's now using a reusable water bottle, her whole family is, because she's met me, I love it, and she's learning this stuff, okay? So I'm going to be pushing this and you know me, I'm not going to quit.
I believe you.
Okay, so, four years from now, six years from now, we've got a plastic water bottle, now you've got an industry that can't sell it. What you going to do? Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say, you've spoken at a number of our council meetings, you're very well-prepared, I really appreciate the passion that you bring to it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else before we go to the online folks? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we have one individual online, that would be Beth, I'm going to ask her to unmute. Beth, you just need to accept the unmute and you are ready to go. Welcome back.
Hi, Beth Ives, 10185250th Street, over in Eureka Township. I have spoken in front of you before and I thank you for letting me speak again tonight. As the council stated at the previous public hearing, the break-even point for this project is in 17 years. It has been said before, and it deserves being said again, that the math doesn't work and the citizens of Elko New Market will bear the financial burden. All the while, the citizens have said no to this project. A recent Carol Evans, in the past month, Carol Evans episode on Water Wars, said that all of us, and this was based on information from Minnesota geologist, um, folks, that Dr. Jennings also is associated with, stated that by 2040, all of us in Minnesota are going to be in trouble with water. All of us, not just Niagara, but that will certainly accelerate it for the area, for this area. I assume that all of you live in Elko New Market, this is your neighborhood, th, these are your friends and your neighbors. And if you don't live in this city, then I guess it doesn't immediately affect you unless, of course, you have a private well, which is my big concern. My big concern is my private well, my big concern is all the traffic that's going to be increased. I live not too far from where this project is being proposed. You have the means to say no in so many words to Niagara. You can remove the subsidies to Niagara. You can deny the applications as they don't conform to the city's rural goal, goals and the desire how they want, they want the city to continue to grow and to develop and make room for something, some other business that is more fitting to your actual plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment unless anyone has any final comments. Please come back up.
I'll make it, I'll make it really short. So the Dakota Electric wants to cite that substation, it's clear that 95, I don't know what the percentages are, but the vast majority of the consumption and benefit would be with the city. Currently, it, they, they came to the township meeting, the township won't, can't permit it, they're not the permitting authority, it's either the county or you. If it's primarily to serve the city at Elko, I just ask that the city and the county work together to cite that substation on city property, why not put it in the middle of that industrial park, not put it so that Larry has to look at Niagara in his front yard and a substation in his backyard the size of a fenced-in football field?
Sure.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we're going to close public comment. Thank you all for, those that spoke, those that didn't speak, I just appreciate you showing up and caring enough about the city and the community to do so, so, thank you. All right, on to consent agenda, does anyone have anything they'd like removed from consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda as amended or with the additions.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Bryce, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent passes. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll go into general business.
First item under general business tonight, is reconsideration of ordinance 265, amending Title 11 of the City of Elko New Market City Code concerning revisions to the zoning ordinance. Under state statute, for this type of ordinance, it requires not a supermajority vote from the council, but it requires a majority of the total council. Since we only had three council members at the meeting and one of them voted nay related to it, um, the ordinance could not go into effect and so it does require that the council reconsider the ordinance this evening.
Thank you, Tom. Does anyone need a presentation or any more detail on it?
I watched the meeting, the last one.
Okay, Josh, I know you're passionate about this, you have the floor.
No, I, I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, and, you know, my, my hesitation or my reason for voting no, which was stated at the last meeting, you know, I, I want to, I mean, I think we're here to solve problems, I don't think that this solves any problem, um, I think it's, uh, simply adding more burden and/or barriers for the more diverse housing that, um, some of us are looking for to bring to the city for workforce housing, uh, more affordable housing, uh, options for folks. And I just, I don't see this solving an issue. And it, I, I know I asked at the last meeting if any of the previous, um, apartment projects or, or things like that would have been impacted and it sounds like at least one of them would have been impacted by this, um, or would have been approved if this wasn't in place. So just, I, I still, I, I think this, this doesn't solve a current problem, it only throws up additional barriers and it probably encourages more P U Ds, uh, to, to occur, uh, moving forward to work around, uh, these issues, so. I just, yeah, I will be very much voting against it again.
Any other thoughts or comments? If not, any motions?
Motion to approve, uh, ordinance number 265.
Second.
It's a motion by Bryce, second by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
So, 3-2. Uh, item B.
Uh, this item is consideration of an ordinance along with the summary ordinance for publication, uh, ordinance 269, which would create licensing for the sale of cannabinoid products, so this would be edibles. This item has been discussed at multiple council meetings, uh, the last direction from the council was to staff to develop an ordinance to provide for that licensing, treating it as an intoxicating substance and having ordinance that functioned essentially similar to how we license liquor, off-sale liquor licensing. The ordinance has been prepared, it's been reviewed by the city attorney's office, specifically Leah Coop, who's here tonight to answer any questions that you have, it's been reviewed by staff, um, both, uh, zoning staff, administration and, um, Linda, who is our, administers our licensing process. So we're putting that up for consideration for the council to decide what they'd want to do with it. And if the council does decide to enact the ordinance, uh, we would also be seeking a direction related to a licensing fee. You can pass the license, the ordinance now for it and in our next meeting, we would come, uh, with a, an amendment to our fee schedule to include the fee under, on the consent agenda, if you approve the ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions, any discussion, anyone want a presentation of any sort? Now we have talked about this quite a bit. Or any motions?
I've.
Go ahead.
I've actually kind of changed my tune on this.
What?
Sweet. Yeah, I know, right? And my biggest reason for that is just because of, of kind of the unknown of what could potentially happen in the legislature anyway regarding this subject, so personally, I feel like I would be okay if we waited on this to see what kind of action is taken there, um, because if they clean it up in the first place, then there's no point.
Fair enough.
So. That's where I'm at.
So you're, you're suggesting not, not.
It's not trashed, it was already done.
And it was high-quality work.
Yeah.
You're suggesting, don't take any action on this matter?
Essentially, yeah, I, I mean, we're going to know what's going on here pretty soon if it does get cleaned up, so at that point, then we can decide where we want to go then.
And if I could, um, just to talk about the pros and cons, because our city clients have done one or the other or, you know, um, so there's no one right way to do it. The benefits of passing an ordinance like this is that it gets you your foot in the door for when that bill does come, then you're just amending an already existing license. We'll still have the word document, though, that has this one, to be fair. But the idea being is, whatever happens between now and June in the legislature, you'll have some say in it. We don't know for sure what the bill's going to look like yet, you know, in the legislature as well, so this would give you some certainty today about how it's treated in Elko New Market. But the point stands, there's a lot of uncertainty around this and it still has 30 committees, 14 committees to go through, um, so unstable ground certainly and I appreciate all of your participation in this whole process and however the council decides, you know.
So what, what happens if, let's say, three d, three days from now, somebody wants to open up shop in town, they want to open up a shop and start selling THC products? And then the rules and regulations get changed, the legislature fixes everything and now we want to put, uh, a system in place, a licensing system in place? Does that business then, are they required to then obtain the license even though they had already started working within the city or had a business in the city?
Yeah, so they would have to get a license and that's the difference between zoning, where you can grandfather in a non-conforming land use as a prop, as a property right issue versus licensing, which especially under this general welfare aspect, um, as well as whatever the legislature language comes up with, they'll give us authorization to license that activity. So even if someone's been doing it, that can still be licensed moving forward.
I guess my opinion still stands because if we really thought there was a problem, we already have everything drafted, so we could have a special meeting within a week and say, now we have the licensing ordinance in place.
Week and a half, we have to.
Okay, week and a half, I was, I was a little off.
Yep.
All right. That's where I'm at.
I mean, I'm okay letting it die as well, but does anyone want to make a motion? If not, we can just move on.
And, and that's what I would say, if, if you don't intend to work on it to keep it less complicated, just simply not make a motion and then it just.
Right.
It, it's an, it's an perpetual limbo. It, it's an, it's a perpetual limbo. If you, you can choose to table it, but that requires a leg, eh, a procedural issue to take it off the table at a future meeting, or you can vote it down, which doesn't mean that it's not still out there, but you've made a specific direction related to the ordinance at this time. The language could be recycled at a later date if you wanted to.
Does anyone wanna make a motion on this topic?
I would like to.
Throw out some motion. By Kate, any seconds?
Wow.
Not hearing any seconds.
Can they let it just die, or would it be better for them to make a motion?
I would, um. Yeah, I'm not a huge fan of just letting things linger on the agenda. I have to report back to my boss, so I, I would prefer a, a motion perhaps to table the, the consideration of this ordinance indefinitely.
So moved.
Second.
Some motion by myself, second by Bryce. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, it's officially tabled.
Just a naysayer, just a naysayer tonight.
Move on to reports. Anything for administration?
No, not unless there's any questions for staff.
I didn't skip anything, okay?
Nope.
Okay. Any further comments for public works? I know there was a record.
No, the, the most notable item within the department is obvi, the item that was on the agenda.
Chief Brady, how are you?
Good. Are you gonna be mad if I take a couple minutes of your time?
Take an hour if you'd like. It's
'Cause for the public record, I am afraid of our mayor, just so you guys know that.
We'll carry a gun.
So, uh, just some update on staffing. Good news, we just got information that March thirtieth, our newest officer's gonna start to fill officer hoteling vacancies. And I'd like to also thank council member Bryce Shanky for all his help. He's done four interviews for us, coming in during the day to help interview our candidates. We have two candidates that are in the background process for Brenton Carcuff, who just left last Monday. So we do have technically two openings, one that's gonna be filled, and then we have two candidates that, once the backgrounds are gonna be complete, we'll pick a candidate and then have that officer start as soon as possible. So, we did have a good turn finding candidates on our open until filled process. So officially, we are closed, and we have some great candidates. We're looking forward to backgrounding. Also like to thank Sergeant Craig Bell's been working very hard backgrounding all these candidates. These investigations are very difficult and take a lot of time, and so he's been really working hard to get those done, and I'm open for questions from any of the council members.
Thank you, chief.
All right, thank you.
Uh, engineering?
No report.
All right. Community development?
The item that we need direction on tonight is related to the extension of lease for six forty-one Main Street, as the council's very well aware.
Rent thing?
It's a rent thing. A year and a half ago, we purchased the property next door as part of the purchase agreement. We provided for a lease for the owners of that property to continue to reside there for up to two years, free of rent. They have since moved off the property to another residence. However, they still have their personal effects there due to some personal circumstances of a significant nature that I won't go into in a public meeting, but the council's aware of. I advise you, they're requesting an extension to the lease to allow them adequate time to remove their personal effects from the property. We are asking two questions of the council tonight. One, are you in favor of extending the lease, and if so, do you wish to choose to charge rent after the original two-year rent-free period or not? Staff has, I believe in the report, indicated to the council that if you were to extend it, we feel it would be reasonable and not detrimental to us to extend it through till the end of September.
Let me ask it this way. Is everyone in favor of this? Then I'm not gonna argue against it. Let's just move on.
Uh, we would anticipate then this will come back as a consent agenda item for council at a future meeting.
Okay. Anything for parks?
We had a really good meeting last night. We had probably about twenty people in attendance representing the pickleball lobby related to facilities. A very, actually very nice group of people. They're just continuing to indicate that they would like a permanent outdoor or some form of outdoor facility. They currently have time at the gym at Eagleview, but as they indicated, they wanna kinda play under the clouds in the sky during the warmer portions of the year. So that a further discussion on that topic's been scheduled for the April commission meeting.
Tom, is, was there any discussion of the park in Woodcrest?
Yes, we talked about it last night. As I was discussing with them, the types of pro, the projects that we need to work on this year, the two big projects are gonna be refurbishment of the park at Woodcrest and completion or building of the park at Boulder Heights.
Thank you. Any questions or other comments? All right. CCEC.
The egg hunt is on April first at ten o'clock. Registration is open. It's cheaper and more efficient to pre-register. So that's my plug for that. Registration deadline is March twenty-fourth, which is a Friday. Other than that, I think, um, no, that's all I have for now. Well, no, I have a little bit more. I was gonna have more. It was gonna be
Take your time.
Better right out. Take, oh, thank you.
It is on the website. I don't think we have posted it on the
I found this on the website. We'll need a social media post for the account. Please. I don't know who does that.
It's provided to me. I put it up. So soon as I have it.
All right. When you, when it is provided to you. We're taking a look at the, I don't know what the formal name of this document is. The resolution establishing the CCEC. It's very outdated and formal compared to what the committee really is and what it's doing, so we're just gonna take some time to look at it and come back with some suggestions and edits for your input and approval, so. Depending on the agenda for the next meeting, it probably will not be there, but the following meeting then, when things may be less exciting.
Sounds good.
All right, I'll be done now.
Uh, the report's scales, scales tomorrow morning. You know what, I'm kinda blanking on what the, do you remember what the topic is?
I wasn't planning on it.
Okay.
I wasn't planning on attending because of demands in the office, so I didn't spend a lot of time on what the agenda was.
That's fine. Do you have it handy?
Scott Coney Assessor is speaking.
Yes, it's the assessor.
Michael Thompson. It's usually a really good one, especially given the changes in real estate pricing. I usually have a separate one-on-one conversation with Michael specifically related to Alco New Market rather than countywide. But for those of you that can attend virtually, I would recommend it. It's usually a very interesting presentation.
Whether dependent, I'll be there in person, but, yeah, I know, does everyone have the link to attend virtually?
I don't.
If you're interested in attending.
I probably have it somewhere buried in my email.
Okay. I don't know, there's anything else to report on scale unless you had anything for service delivery?
I do have one item for the council tonight. So as the council's aware, I serve as the city's representative on the regional training facility board. The regional training facility, for those of you haven't been there, is over just outside of Jordan. The, this last year, the board embarked on a process of kind of the long-term vision for the facility. We've now had the facility for well over a decade. It's at the point where there's, needs to be decisions about investment or reinvestment or not related to the facility. And there's been, just very recently, some increased displeasure from some of the partners with the facility related to the return on benefit. That has peaked in the last several weeks, and there will be a pretty robust discussion at the meeting on Friday. Multiple partners at this point have threatened that they're going to pull out of the facility. And so there's a lot of discussion that needs to occur. I will explain to the council that I'm a little bit frustrated with the process, 'cause from my perspective, it appears that some of the frustration that's out there is due to a lack of proper communication in other, in partner organizations between the people who are on the board and the board's responsibilities to deal with the facility and other members of their organizations who are expressing the frustrations. It seems like there's two different minds and two different conversations going on, and that has made the current discussion more difficult. So, but that'll be the discussion tomorrow. Truth be told, related to the facility, are, we're the smallest contributing partner because of the size of our organization and the amounts on the factors that relate to the cost formula or contribution to the facility on an annual, annual lease less than six thousand dollars. Other partners are in the tens of thousands of dollars related to it, so we have the least amount of skin in the game. And given our geography of where we're located, we have the potential to be able to backfill the services that the facility provides for us through other means. The chief and I have had extensive conversations related to it. So I will update the council on what the results of that conversation are, but I honestly think that what my role's going to be tomorrow is gonna be more of a facilitator between people who have strong opinions, more than anything, partially because of our financial position and relative impact to us, and then part of it because I'm probably one of only two people in the room that's actually served on the board since the facility's inception, so I have probably the most history related to the facility. So, more to come on that, but I, it, it went from zero to sixty in a relatively short period of time, so I wanted to give you a, a heads up that there might be possibly some substantial changes in the nearer term that really were not known a couple weeks ago.
All right. I thirty-five?
Uh, I'll just say on the record that we had our, our meeting today, and we had our presentation that was given by Tom and Renee, and then who was, uh, Paul?
Paul Morris from SRF.
Yeah, Paul Morris from SRF. It went very, very well. I was, uh, very impressed. You guys did a fantastic job on that presentation, and I think it did exactly what we wanted it to do, and that was to gain some attention on the project and give some further information to some of the other parties that are a part of that decision-making process, and lots of good questions and really good engagement from the group as a whole, so I think it, overall, it was a success.
Can I ask, is it unusual that Mindot was not represented this morning?
Um, yeah. Yeah, it's, it is unusual. Usually, they're there as, as well as Metro Transit. Neither one was there.
It's very strange to me.
It's notable that they weren't there.
Yes. Is the presentation that was made able to be made public or in some form?
Yeah, I'm
Put on our website or something?
I'm waiting for the final presentation from
Okay.
Mr. Morris, who put his portion of the slides together and then added our slides to his, so I emailed him this morning as soon as we got to the meeting, and I haven't gotten them yet, but if you'd like them put on our website or
That'd be good, yeah.
We can do that.
So question, so as a way of disseminating the information, we wanted to ask the council, we'd planned on giving the presentation to the planning commission, 'cause they haven't seen it. Actually, the majority of the council saw it at the, at the presentation today, and just so the public knows, that was a posted meeting, so that the council could be there in support of the presentation and, and the interchange project. Is this something that for the public's benefit, you would like a presentation at a future council meeting? Basically repeat?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
If you didn't think it was, you, now you do.
Well, I was only gonna, I was only gonna suggest that if it's being recorded at a planning commission meeting, we can always post the video of that on the city website, but
And that's where
We can certainly
Or we can do the joint meeting like we've done before.
Yeah, I, I'm open to whatever, but, yeah. What's easiest for staff?
We'll figure it out.
Okay.
But what I'm hearing is that the best way to do it is possibly to present it at a meeting, and then we can take the video clip, and then we can post that online.
In the meantime, if we get the slides, I would put them up. Is that a thing or not a thing?
The, the, with the slides, there's, I think, the, the narrative context to it that kind of explains what the information is, rather than the slides themselves would probably be more beneficial to the general public. 'Cause the slides are in a very bullet point format to support a verbal presentation, so that would be my thought on it.
Okay. Uh, discussion by council, I have one item that I tipped my hand on earlier, but does anyone else have anything? All right, I do, just given the attention on the Niagara project, I did wanna take one more stab at not a formal public hearing in city council chambers, but doing some sort of public forum to have a more casual conversation with folks, address whatever questions or concerns could be had. I was kinda, I mean, I had a kind of a date in mind, but obviously there'd be a little bit of planning involved. My question to the rest of the council is, is that something that anyone else would wanna be a part of? I'm gonna say, you've always had my back before, Kate.
No, I would definitely say yes.
Okay. All right, well, at least there's one other council member. I, I
Depending on when it is, you know, I mean
What's the date?
We can figure it out.
Not next Monday, but the Monday after that, so it'd be
The twentieth?
Twentieth, something like that, yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Will you make these decision right now, please?
What I'll do is I'll coordinate with I'll coordinate with cities, with the staff on trying to put something together and
Well, what does the council have, what, what does the council have for expectations for format for this?
We need some direction if we need to be making presentations.
And we'll, and that's something we'll work. I don't want like a full presentation like we've done before. This is really
I think it's more of a Q and A, right?
Yeah, this is really a Q and A thing. It would be helpful to have people with more technical background on it, or some, at least someone that can answer more of the technical questions. Whether that's Rich or whoever that might be. That's basically it. Go ahead.
I, I do really, really support what you're suggesting, but understand if you need techn, technical experts who are able to answer the questions that we regularly hear, we're gonna need the entire team. That's my feeling.
That's, I would support.
Which is okay, but I need to make sure they're available.
Sure.
I'm wondering if we'd start with the list that was given to you to make sure we have a response.
Sure.
Whether it's satisfactory or not, but at least a response, and maybe the meeting opens with that, might sweep the leg on a lot of additional questions.
Well, and
And it would inform who we need to have there to
And, and, and with all respect, the council has made promises with regards to staff responding and answering all questions. So there's a question of whether or not they've been answered already through, in multiple forums, and then there's also question, there's some questions we can't answer. There are questions we got through the hearing process that were large rhetorical, philosophical, and societal questions that we can't answer staff or aren't directly related to the specifics of the project. So we would, the staff would like some direct, specific direction on what questions we're supposed to answer, and whether or not that it's determined by the council that we previously answered them adequately.
Here's what I'd like to do. Right now, I wanted to do is see what kind of commitment there would be or interests there would be in, from members of the council. It sounds like there is some, so, Tom, my intent was to connect with you tomorrow to kinda script this out a little bit, so we can have a plan, and
Okay, sounds good.
All right.
Would, would it make sense, Mr. Mayor, to consider doing this at the council meeting, 'cause I assume we're gonna have that whole team of experts at whatever meeting we have this discussion at in the future?
I
And then potentially delay, you know, any decision at that council meeting based on, I mean, 'cause ultimately, if we're gonna have a conversation the Monday prior, we could potentially delay it anyway based on that discussion, so why not just have it at the council meeting when we're already planning on people there?
My, my intent was to make this more casual. I mean, I use that word too many times, but just, this is a formal environment. It's not always the easiest thing for people to come up to the podium and talk. I, I wanted to try and eliminate that.
Or like a town hall.
We could probably even still do something like that if we started the meeting on the twenty-third earlier. There, there's a way to do that, but I'd, I'd be open to that if that's, I'll put it this way, if the rest of the council wanted to participate in something like that, maybe that is the way we oughta go.
I mean, I think you're gonna have the majority of us who want to be there, and I can't say for sure that I can be there on that Monday, but I for sure will be there on the twenty-third. So, I mean, that's where I can commit, and I'm sure then some of the experts that we
So, I mean, that's where I can commit, and I'm sure then some of the experts that we'd be considering there, but-
Well, it's a good idea. It's- Go ahead. You look like you were gonna say something. Did I just?
Well, I'm just thinking, like, if we have an, in, something informal, so then it's something that's likely not recorded, people can't reference later. If we all can't be there, are we all gonna have all of the information that we need to make those decisions? I would, I like the idea of having it at, well, so, 'cause like, I have, you know, a, a list of questions and that, and still lots of content to go through from responses city staff has provided, and then, you know, to see if my questions that I have have been answered, and if they haven't, then I'm going to, you know, ask those questions. If that happens on the twenty-third and we don't have the answers to the questions-
Sure.
Then we're likely to delay. If we have this informal conversation on Monday, my questions are answered there, or they're not, and then they're answered on Thursday, but then we aren't all in the same place, so we don't all have-
So, are you suggesting the Thursday, like, before the council meeting?
My rambling is, yes, I would say Thursday makes more sense to me. I don't really like to say I-
If we move the start time of the council meeting up to, we'll see, or, maybe not the start time of the council, of a business meeting, but maybe we do like five to seven, an open forum conversation type of, I mean, would that be something that would be okay with everybody, then we start a business meeting at seven?
That would, that's-
Does that sound like it could be doable?
Yep, 'cause then you have one night that you have everybody here, that you're gonna have them here any way you can.
Yeah.
And I would, I mean, I would still say that we wanna record it, uh, uh, because it would be, I mean, I know you, I, I hear you with the, the informality of it and making folks comfortable or whatever, but I think any information shared there will probably be very good beneficial information that, um-
So, here's my response to that. We've had five and a half hours of public hearings, um-
Actually, closer to thirteen total.
Well, wasn't, I was just talking about the city council ones, so-
That was eight.
That, that was eight?
Yeah.
God, that was five and a, I mean, it was just one night was five and a half, but, so we've had thirteen hours of public hearings and, and public feedback. We've had months of emails, phone calls, in-person contacts. I feel if we don't record something, we're not shorting anyone. I mean, this is, I really want to just have more face-to-face, open dialogue conversations with people. Now, if I'm in the minority in that position, I'll gladly step aside and we'll do it in a more formal way, but I don't think we can record it without having it be a more formal process.
That is correct.
I, I think that the fact that so many have said that their questions have not been answered, that recording it would be a good idea, because there's then record of those questions being answered, and then it's also, they're also able to then reference back to it if they wanna re-watch it or clarify or whatever the case might be.
Okay. Does everyone else feel that way? I mean, I'm okay with that. Okay, so that's kind of our tentative plan.
I don't, I don't think-
You already won.
Well, I, no, I'm- Easy, Joe. All I'm saying is, is then, I don't think that takes away from the informality of having the discussion. You're gonna run the meeting, how you wanna run it, you know, as far as the, just free-flowing or whatever, it's just, we'll have a recording of it.
Yeah, I, yeah. Yeah, I, I, I don't like the imagery of us all sitting up here and everyone else up there. It's like, we're not against each other.
We can, we can sit over there and have-
We'll workshop some. We'll figure some out.
I'll pop a chair right over here, and we can sit in a circle and-
Sing songs or something, or, yeah, that'd be good. On that note, uh, any other discussion by council?
Motion to adjourn.
It's a motion by Bryce.
Second.
Second by Kate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
To adjourn. Good job, everybody. Thank you, and thank you all for showing up.